Select Board Meeting, January 3rd, 2018. In attendance is Mr. Moguln, Mr. Didi, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, Mrs. Pendleton.
Good evening. I'd like to start off first for a moment of silence in remembrance of the sudden passing of Michelle Ackerman. Michelle Ackerman was a former member of the Park and Rec Committee, elected member of the Planning Board, and also is on the Marijuana Subcommittee, and she passed suddenly over this past weekend, so if we could just take a moment, please. Thank you. And if we could all just have a thought for her family at this difficult time. All right, let's knock out a couple. First thing is, public comments. If we have anyone in the audience that has a comment they'd like to address to the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, now's your chance. Raise your name and/or your hand. We're good. We're good, so we're ahead of schedule. So why don't we knock out a couple of quick things. Acknowledged Payables Warrant 1815B from December 18th of last year in the amount of $296,675.43. And Acknowledgable Payroll Warrant 1815 from 12/21 in the amount of $190,573.16. And a Payables Warrant 1816B dated January 2nd of this year in the amount of $157,104.20. Okay. And then we have the minutes of our last meeting, which was December 18th.
Yep. Make a motion for December 18th, 2017, minutes.
I was not here, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
One abstention.
And one abstention. A quick couple of action items. This is from Chief David Riccardi. "Pleased to inform you that our Southwick K-9 Fund is larger today due to a generous donation from David B. Hart from Laurel Ridge Road in Southwick, and he made a $200 donation to the Department K-9, so we need a motion to accept this generous donation."
So moved.
Say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
"Approve calendar year 2018 LMC ramp attendant rates." They voted at their meeting last year, December 14th, to recommend to the Selectmen Board -- there's a new one -- that the pay rates of the ramp attendants is noted for calendar year 2018. These will continue to be compliant with the Mass Minimum Hourly Wage Rates.
When it comes out of there, ramp fees.
So we need a motion to...
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Put that one too where I had it, I forgot. Excellent work. What's that? In the chair mail. No, I got that's next.
Yeah.
Okay. And then also from Chief David Riccardi, "A $25 donation from Mr. and Mrs. Harold Odorn, who resides on White Street. Odorn family requests that donation be used to freight expenses associated with training the newest member of the Southwick Police Department General. Need a motion to accept this generous donation."
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one more donation. Please accept the following -- accept, accept the following donations from, oh man, Thomas Pia Centini of Vinings Hill Road donated a wonderful gift of $500 to our shelter, and accept a donation from Anna Hughes of Davis for $250, so net $750.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a couple of quick... This is from Chief Russ Anderson. If you recall, in the last quarter of last year, we received a federal grant for some breathing apparatus equipment, and we got credit for a trade-in on our older but still functional equipment, and they don't want them. So Chief is asking for us to declare that the SCBA equipment is obsolete and surplus, and then we can potentially donate this equipment to another fire department with no liability to the town of Southwick. So I need a motion for saying...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It's gotta be out of that building at $48. Just get rid of this thing.
There you go.
Even better.
And there you go.
I don't need another dumpster over there.
No, no, no. I'm gonna hold this next one for a little -- for further discussion. This is gonna take some additional discussion. Okay, so this is from the Mass ABCC. This is just certifying that our population is gonna be 9,502 people as of July 10th, 2018.
Can we do this just so we can keep how many licenses we have, or...
Seasonal.
Oh, for the seasonal deals?
The seasonal population increase estimation.
And they've only changed all that, that'll all go out the window anyways, right?
Well, you only issue one seasonal a year.
Right, yeah, literally. So we need a motion for...
Well, we've actually got two.
Some of the new places, some of the places that you change their hours should really... Well, is the new place that changes hours, you think?
We have two right now, right? Two seasonal?
Yeah. Mows. Hedgewood.
So I'll make the motion that 9,502 people as of July 10th, 2018, and not one more.
Second. All in favor?
Supposed to blow that 10,000.
What's the help on us for any more?
It's just to notify the ABCC that we're gonna go to all the licenses.
Do we don't need a motion, or is just gonna sign it?
No, you can motion it. Just sign it.
So this is a -- the last certificate is licenses who failed to renew for 2018 is blank, and licenses disapproved by the city for 2018 is none.
Well, they're both none.
Right.
Yeah, they're both none.
Make a motion for sign, I would say.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And these are just -- you need votes for these, Carl?
Yeah, I need votes, and authorize the Chair to sign for the authorized, the Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative to do our procurement for our diesel and gasoline commodities for fiscal year 19.
Do you have a number of gallons yet?
I'll insert that. I'm getting that updated, but it's usually around 20,000.
I usually hesitate before I sign the blank stuff.
It's gonna be the same amount as last.
Motion for the Chair to sign.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It goes right there. And then the next one is for the same thing for diesel?
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion for the Chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We got plenty of gas.
Yep. So we'll hold these?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there any other thing left in the chair mail that I need to go over to the next item of business? No, I think I got them all.
We're holding off on the two fire...
Yeah, only because I think there's gonna be some discussion.
Okay.
I would think.
Can we table them to next meeting, or...
No, just till later in this meeting, I think.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna come to them in this meeting. We may end up doing that, but I wanna get back there. Okay, so at our last meeting last year, seems like it was a while ago, we tabled the Chief of Police Discussion and Decision so that we could have a full board, and we now have a full board, so why don't we move on to that topic and have our discussion and make our decision? Floor is open for any discussion prior to any motions or what we wanna do?
I think they were all great. We waited an extra couple of weeks here, which was fine. You're only gonna pick one, and then, you know, in theory, if the boards stay close to what they are today, you'll go back in years to come and keep looking at your people within, I would hope. So I'm ready to make a decision, I'm fine.
No, I agree with Joe. He had actually four good candidates.
He really did, yeah.
And this is gonna be my third time voting for a Chief of Police in the town of Southwick, and I think I told both of you gentlemen, this is the toughest, one of the toughest decisions you're gonna make. We're a small town, we know all four of the applicants, one withdrew.
Yep.
We've socialized, we've worked with them, we've seen them grow through the ranks, so it's a very hard decision because you can only appoint one. And I think all four of the applicants, Sergeant Sanders included, have really worked very hard for the town of Southwick through, and each in their own way, through different educational and classes and training and experience on the job. So it's gonna be a very difficult decision, but I think we had four good applicants, and I think that was, shows that, I think the town of Southwick has been doing a good job training our people, and where we didn't need to look outside, so I do agree with Joe.
And I agree, I think we had, you know, four very, very good candidates, and, you know, the interview process was informative and educational for everyone. I think it says a lot for our department. I agree with you, Russ, I think this is definitely one of the hardest decisions that we make as a board, especially when the field of candidates was so good. I also think, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, I think when we, as our role as Commissioners, even when we're pointing those reserve officers, right, we gotta be looking down the road as to how we grow the department, because any one of those people is potentially is your next Chief of Police 25 years down the road, 20 years down the road, and we have to continue to look at that and continue to work the bench so that we have, you know, as strong a field of candidates in 15 or 20 years from now. And, you know, it's enlightening when, you know, those reservists, you know, when they sit in front of you and they tell you that they wanna be the Chief of Police, okay, that's a great career goal, and then we have to, as a board and working with the Police Department, provide the resources and the training to get them to where they are. And I think, you know, of the four candidates, all of them that we interviewed, all of them could and would do a great job as Chief, and, you know, that says a lot for the department, and we have to just continue on this great path so that we can always have this, you know, someone who's experienced and knows the town to continue on doing the great job. And also says a lot for our current Chief, as far as, you know, he's done an excellent job, and, you know, looking forward to, you know, him working with the next Chief on a smooth and positive transition to, you know, as we exit 2018 into 19. So with that being said, I entertain a motion to, for a candidate...
I'll make a motion for Lieutenant Bishop, I think he's qualified, and that's where I stand.
I think, just for reasons of discussion...
Yep.
You know, I'd like to second that, but I'd also like to nominate somebody else, too.
Okay.
So I'll second that. I'd like to nominate Detective Sergeant Landis.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Bishop. I've looked at this long and hard, and I must say, I think of the interviews that we had, I think that we have the two strongest interviews and two strongest candidates by the smallest of margins on the table. That being said, I think looking at everything that, you know, the body of work, the tenure in the town, education and experience, I think that I would cast my vote. I think we have to do an actual vote, right?
But you made a motion, so...
We have a motion, and I can't third a motion, so I don't know what to do with another motion on the floor, but I think that Lieutenant Bishop would make an awesome Chief of Police. That being said, I think that Detective Sergeant Landis is a very, very qualified candidate, and I think he would also make a great Chief either, you know, at some point in the future. And I really don't want anyone to come away from this with, as a slight to them, I just think if you look at the body of work and you look at where they are in their career at this point in time, that I think Lieutenant Bishop is the right choice. So that's where we are. So I think we need a vote.
Right, motion was made.
Motion's made and seconded, so with that where we are, all in favor?
Joe, Didi, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye?
I'll just abstain, just because of the other three candidates, appreciation of their service to the town itself.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And on that note, do we look at if Mr. Bishop decides to take the position when it's offered to him through Carl? Do we look at a Lieutenant's position next, and since Mr. -- I forgot his name, Detective Landis is spoken so highly of, do we look at, do we keep all their packets and look at, send a letter out to all four of those candidates to see if they're interested in Lieutenant's position down the road?
You mean the remaining candidates?
Those remaining candidates, yes.
That's...
Unless there's someone else that would have qualified under our guidelines.
I mean, you've done job description updates for both positions, so you certainly can...
Correct. And since the mood right now is that you had two great candidates sitting in front of them.
I think the important thing you need to do is...
I just think we should remember this, and just we'll move on.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, you've made a, you know, motion, you've got a vote now.
Yep.
So you really have to go through the process of developing a contract...
Absolutely.
Right, right.
...the other individual under contract because he hasn't left the Lieutenant position slot yet.
Correct, I guess what I'm saying is...
So that would be premature.
Yes, right, like to hold on to their packets.
Yeah.
Because God forbid I don't need another 16 packets being dropped off and 47 emails. I'm done, I shouldn't want one.
Well, I think we owe a debt to Carol, right, because even money was him going over to blow, right?
I took out that life insurance.
So the motion is subject to negotiation of a suitable contract, and...
Right, and so the Board should authorize one of its own to work with me and the Select of Candidates.
Make a motion for the Chairman of the Board and Mr. Steinhardt to figure things out. Nice and simple. Anyone wanna second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Beautiful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, Fire Department.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now you can all read the rules.
Or you can stay.
Right, everybody can leave.
Almost like a town meeting.
Pretty much. Weeks are fired, after a week after. Oh, sorry.
You know.
Thank you, guys, sir.
Congratulations. So how does this work? Thank you both for staying? Okay, that's great.
They just wanna go to the next meeting.
And Marcus has another meeting to go to, he can't go anywhere. Okay. It was the toughest decision since I've been on the Board.
I don't know, I think that dog thing was a pretty good one.
No, that was easy. I wanted to put...
We spent more money on that dog.
Well, yeah.
We're trying to be diplomatic.
And as a segue...
You got a puppy?
I know. No, thank God. The Fire Chief was not as nearly as close, in my opinion.
Yeah, but because you wanted him to...
I'm not quite sure how to take that.
No, 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 no. That's a high compliment. That's a high compliment, because we also had a very good field for that, but I don't think it was, it wasn't as nearly as tough a decision for me. I knew from, and I was on this, we had a Subcommittee for that, I knew coming out of the Subcommittee that that was the right call, and, you know, this Board was, you know, obviously very smart.
After you did all that, and I gave him no money?
Yeah, so... No, 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 no. And Carl and I were on that Subcommittee. And we sent, what, four candidates up for that, right?
Yeah.
It was...
One cost him a vehicle.
Okay, anyway, I held these two over just because I figured there might be some discussion. So, and I probably got them out of, no, I got them in the right order. So the first one is, you sent us a letter that there's a federal grant application period upon us, and we spoke about this briefly today as well, if you wanna explain for...
So two parts. You remember last year we got the SCBAs?
Yeah.
And we talked, it was actually, I put it in the budget from last year to go for the compressor, would be Phase 2 to go for...
That fills them up.
That fills them up. So I'm just looking for the approval to apply for that grant. That would mean, I think it's like 60-some-odd thousand. Feds would pay 3,000, we would pay, should we get the award. Should we not get the award? Right now it's working, and we would go in next year, probably just go in for capital.
Same discussion we've had before, yeah?
Right.
Through the capital.
More to set in the second.
Yeah, so on the second part is the latter, and as much as I would love a street named after myself, but... Just love the vision. Talking with the representative from the grant, going to a couple of the classes and things, vehicle grants are very, very, very competitive, and they only give out about 25 a year, or so I think they did last year. And one of the things that was discussed was not going for the whole item, but going for a partial of that. And number one, it gives you more points in the scoring, it shows you're invested in it, and you're just looking for help. The other part of that is, we can't, we know the ladder truck's at the end of its life. We're meeting tonight to give you an operational plan to go forward. However, that amount of money is gonna have to get into a town meeting sometime in the near future, whatever you wanna call the future. We cannot apply for a grant if we're gonna fund it through town meeting type of funding. So if we go parallel and we go for a partial portion of the grant, we can still go down the town meeting road with the remainder that we have to fund, because then it becomes pretty clear, we have to fund this, obviously, we're just looking for help. And should we not get the grant, perhaps, and Carl and I had a couple of discussions, and we don't know what the correct answer is yet, then the number could be amended at a later point. The problem with the grants are, they close in February, they may start coming out in May, April, June, August, you know, they got delayed because of FEMA and all the hurricanes and stuff. So you're at their beck and schedule, however, we're on a schedule too, because we're a year and a half to two years away to actually get something in the door once we say, yeah, we want. So that was my thought process, was to go forward for applying for a portion of the grant for the truck, instead of the entire portion.
We would have to figure out how to learn the vote in May with bond council.
Yep, and is number one in the same boat, too?
No, number one's a separate complete grant.
Right, so you wouldn't budget it for this year, you would, if we didn't get it, you'd budget it in the previous year?
Next year.
Or next year? Yes, got it.
And for the fire truck, you're just looking from a partial payment.
From us, like a verbal that, yes, we're interested to do it that way, or?
Yes, yeah.
To file the update.
Yeah, you know.
And then it's up to us to go and beg town meeting.
I mean, our debt replacing, our debt replacing debt schedule does call for another piece of fire apparatus, in fact, putting one in the pipeline is a few years overdue.
Right, correct. And we're well aware...
I have the long-term debt, I have the short-term debt.
Well, we waited, Carl, because there was the big one coming, money-wise.
Well, but we also... But you know something? When you speak to the bond council, and you speak to the financial advisor, and you figure out if you're gonna amortize it over 15 or 20 years, because it does have a 30-year life, then you get down to a reasonable amount.
Right, and we also, and they also, we also had that apparatus study done, and that's part of what they're gonna meet on tonight, is to kinda come up with a go-forward plan, not just for the ladder, but what, you know, how does this all play?
Possible consolidating...
Possible consolidation.
Of other functions, and maybe another smaller apparatus to go with it, you know?
Correct.
So we do it as a package at town.
Buy two, kill three, you know, whatever that is, you know?
Exactly.
Right.
Because you have the other unit that's gonna come off the road in a few years that costs you $125,000, and you're never gonna get your full return on that investment, so this is still a better way to do it.
Correct. Hindsight is 20/20 on that one, sir, let's not pour salt on that one.
Two pieces of apparatus, you know, replacing three functions.
Right.
So the timing is gonna be right. Within that 18 to 24 months, the timing for the debt rolling off is gonna be right.
All right.
It's an easy sell.
Easy sell. I mean, we're gonna try to get the money.
Right.
We know we need the equipment eventually.
Be a blessing if someone split it with us, it'd be wonderful.
Right.
Guess what? Two years of buying a truck, one day or the other. Less than that.
I don't know what word you might wanna characterize it, but it's necessary.
Right, absolutely.
Sure, absolutely. Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, we're a growing community, we know we need it.
9502 was the number, Russ, 9502.
I think I used 9706 in the grant, but don't tell anybody.
You're already near 10 anyway.
So it's, you know, and the rest of it, we're gonna start budget hearings, we're gonna be bringing him in, the Chief of Police, ahead of meeting with the Finance Committee, because those are the two big tickets.
But it's been coming for a while.
And, hey, we're gonna go, you know...
The tank is gonna be paid off in two or three years, and most, and separate from that, it's just been one ambulance, you know, the ambulance payments, you just reauthorize another, and then there's obviously rolling stock for dump trucks, DPW.
Right.
But that's all part of making sure that the two square miles are appropriately serviced.
And it's also my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that having that piece of apparatus in your town is beneficial for your insurance rating for everyone in the town, not just the town of Southwick, but having that piece of apparatus is, has implications for everyone's homeowner's insurance, business insurance, so on and so forth.
Correct.
My second is more of a question. Have, is there any benefit or thought to going in with another town that we provide mutual aid to as a cosigner on a grant application to support the grant, or a letter of support? No, it would be our truck, but, you know, we know that we get called out to other towns on a regular basis to support them en masse.
It's an interesting point in that...
Up the hill.
I didn't wanna say Granville out loud, but I'm saying Granville out loud now, right? You know, with everything that's gone on, but...
The grant does allow for letters of support, which are typically from Senators and, you know, Congressmen, things like that. I don't know that it would hurt.
Can't wait, right?
You know, if you got it from another government.
Because you get called out to where? Granville, Tallinn?
We're on automatic response to Granville.
So, you know, if they tone out and they need a ladder, they're calling here, right? So certainly a letter from...
It wouldn't hurt.
Would it be a letter from their Fire Chief, or their Selectman?
I would think their Fire Chief.
Fire Chief, okay.
But, you know, and/or, and we should, you know, we should reach out in that regard, just...
You know what, Mr. Chairman? I'll make a suggestion.
You know what, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a suggestion. We're going to be at the Mass Municipal Convention in a couple of weeks with our good friends from our sister city of Granville. And I think we could approach them over a cup of coffee and work this out and get letters of support from them and from the fire chief.
Absolutely.
Sounds like a plan.
Cool.
Sounds great.
I think it might take more than a
Either way, yeah.
But, okay, we'll see, whatever it takes.
So, you need a motion to
Apply for both items.
I'd love to make an emotion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, how does this, what is, how does this affect our wager?
It's not over yet, you guys see.
Yeah, we You get the whole truck, you still get the street.
You gotta call the side.
Get a stop sign.
Apparently, we gotta get
A dead end. It's a dead end instead of a true.
I don't believe we have dead ends anymore. I think they're called no-through streets.
Right.
Marcus, what's the terminology for that?
Sure, whatever you Remember that in an hour.
Okay, next. This is regarding EMS call shifts.
So, this is basically going a step back. Last year about this time, we had a similar issue, but trying to cover our weekends. And we're in a constant competition with other people that pay more money. Just basically what it comes down to. We get young EMTs in, we get a good bunch, they train, they're here for a year or so, and then they're off to
And this is for the non-career.
Non-career, this is call force.
Right, just your call.
So, we want to put the rate back to where it was before we started losing some people. What we did last time was take our number work backwards and try to give some more money to the weekdays.
Right.
Which at the cost of weekends. So, what we want to do is go back to basically where we were. The, we have the money because we have two unfunded career staffs that we're, career positions that we haven't filled yet for half a year. So, the money is there. And then in next year's budget, we would use the same recipe, basically, to move forward. I did do some comparisons with other call forces. A, they're very far and few between anymore. And they've all basically gone to per diem by the hour instead of a stipend-based system. So, we're still below them, we still have some of that competition, but this would, I think, help ease it and not affect the budget.
Just refresh my memory, how exactly it works on weekends and
So, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights, from six at night to six in the morning, there's people at the call force at the station.
At the station.
At one rate.
Okay.
There's a lower rate from Tuesday, or excuse me, Monday through Thursday at the station.
Yep.
And we still have a people, some people that have been on for a while that live close to the station that we use the old three-dollar-an-hour stipend type of thing. They prefer to sleep at home.
Right, but do, these people are manned right at the station, can respond immediately and
Which has been great. I mean, that part of it's been terrific.
I listen all the time and yes, you're absolutely right. It's like, no sooner does dispatch say something, there's a response and that truck's
You know, and the same for
As if you've got a career person.
Absolutely.
Right.
And same for the, you know, we went to the duty crew position for the fireside. It's been great having an officer, even though we're down a few, the guys are working hard. And having that officer to, hey, dispatch's got a question or some, it's worked out well. But unfortunately, competition's competition. We lost twelve people since last year.
Wow, and the weekdays now are at ten and they're going to go to twelve?
Yes.
Twelve-fifty.
And then the weekends were twelve-fifty and now they're going to go to seventeen-seventy-five.
Right.
Till further notice.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what we got to do. Like you said, you got that position's not filled, so the funding's there, it's not affecting any of us money-wise.
Because what happens is when, when I first got here, we had the problem of career force was third on the list or second on the list, if you will. It goes out to the call force and if they can't fill it, the career force fills it. The career fills, force fills it at a higher rate than that. So, that's, you know, they're on overtime and everything else.
Yeah, and they don't want the hundred hours a week.
And then they burn out.
Right.
And then we have other problems.
Right, so.
Right, in fact, they, they worked with us to want this plan to help themselves.
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct.
So, make a motion as approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to sign it, Doug, just because that one will go to accounting?
Do you want us to sign the other one, too?
No, that's the grant one, no.
Should I, should we now describe a payroll period, like next payroll?
Effective?
Yeah.
You and I.
Whenever the math works out for common, it makes it easy.
We'll make it work for everybody involved.
Okay. Did you want to do covered bridge?
Yes, I'm going to come right to that right next.
Is it still covered?
It's covered by something.
So, covered bridge.
Not us. You have all seen the reports, I believe.
I have not.
From the last meeting, wasn't it, Carl?
It was coming, but I don't think I got it.
Well, we
Got emails.
Yeah, there was a, there was a
So, that's what we've gotten.
There was a report copied that I told everybody. But when the chief looked at it, it kept referencing an earlier study and the chief wanted to get specific. He wanted to send to them his apparatus and what its specs were to make sure that were they saying that his apparatus could go off? It didn't quite answer his question.
So, basically, the, they gave us some axle weight determination.
And where the steel girders were.
Right, and where the steel girders are, although they're not marked. If you go center of the bridge, your tire should hit the thing. The, should go over the steel girders. And my question is, well, our axles are different, only by inches, but then we have dual wheels. What does that do to weight distribution? I'm not an engineer, I don't know. But at face value, the brush truck will go over and the ambulances will go over. And I think we're fine, I'll do that today all day long.
Right.
But a little troubling was it referenced the old report, which this has been that way since nineteen eighty-six, I think. There was never a sixty-ton limit on the, on the bridge. So, I wouldn't want to be driving over with heavier trucks, put that way.
So, our stance is we're not going to?
We're going to stay with the ambulance and the brush trucks.
Because your issue with them was that they had to look at your apparatus dimensions and say, hey, are you telling me I can or can't put this equipment over?
Yeah, because it even went into
It was kind of ambiguous.
Yeah, like fourteen-foot wheelbase. Well, I have a thirteen-foot wheelbase, does that mean those numbers go up or does that mean it goes down?
Right, because you have two axles on the bridge versus, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
And we never
Longer's better.
You don't want to find out.
Well, longer's better. Bridge is this big, thirteen feet axles here.
Did you ask Ben that question?
No, I get it.
I sent it through Ben.
Right, to that engineer?
What at sixty miles an hour?
That's what I thought happened, I sent it back to Ben.
I would just find out from Ben.
See her over before it falls down? I get it.
Let him close that loop.
All right, that's fine.
Coming back's a problem.
Well, you only do one way.
You know, it's, it's interesting because we see what's happening with the bridge in Westfield.
Yeah.
Where
And that's going nowhere.
Right, but they're asking the vehicles to go slower
Not wait, yeah.
To, to meet the requirements.
Right.
You know, and again, we're not engineers and we have a situation here where we got a heck of a liability issue.
Right.
So, is Ben going to be able to close this?
Send the ladder truck first.
The chief will follow up with that.
Joe said.
So that we get the answers that
From that engineer.
Right, from that engineer in layman's term.
But you may have to, Russ, you may have to give him the specs of your truck.
I believe I did on that spreadsheet, but
Yeah, but what happens when our trucks change? We're going to be looking at a new truck, you know? Are we going to be repeating this?
With what we have right now.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't
And that's crazy, too. I mean, I mean, shouldn't even have in this conversation. You know, if we're going to paint two black marks or two red marks, that's where your tires have to stay.
And hope it doesn't snow, like tomorrow.
Right, so have you coming at thirty or forty miles an hour, oh, slow down. And they barely fit that, right? The
I'm not sure about the box and all that, it's a whole different issue.
Right, they lost the marker like leaving or going into that.
Off of Loomis, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, ultimately, they could be in a situation in the future where they should just put pre-cast sections over it and have like a full-fledged crossing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then those would bear the weight.
Well, Joe raises another question. What about that other covered, not bridge to that private residence on, off of North Loomis?
I think, I'm not sure the rating on that one, the ambulance goes over it, I don't think we can get fire trucks in it because of its size.
But we can still reach a house
With hoses. A lot better than here, yeah. I don't say it's easy, but it's doable. And there's only one house.
One house.
So, that's the next step.
He'll let us know.
Okay, please do.
So, the good news is the ambulance and the brush truck can go over, so.
And continuing the good news, we received the new ambulance?
Ambulance is in, got the plates yesterday for registration.
I did.
Did you touch it? Because rumor has it, you break things.
No, Mr. Schneider gave me a tour.
I gotta, I gotta get it loaded, weighed on the scales, and then that information goes to the OEMS. OEMS has just sent us the check and the paperwork and we'll catch up to you, so.
Okay.
Well, that speaks to what
And when's the other one coming back?
Uh, Saturday.
Good.
So.
That's good.
Speaks to what we've always done, right?
Did they give us a decent trade-in on the other one?
We didn't trade it in.
Well, that's, we're still using it.
Yeah.
Five or six thousand, something like that.
That was in the
It might have been twelve.
That was all in the
It was in the original bid.
It was all a bit of war.
Well, that's great, but for six grand, is it worth trading in or do we park it out back for a year?
No, we traded and get rid of it.
Get rid of it.
Yeah, it would have been gone already, they were going to actually swap them. We let us keep it because we knew we had a problem with the other one.
But your other one's going to be in really good shape now.
It better be.
Until, until the light comes on and goes back to Sarah, but yeah, I just, it's all good, they are what they are.
But the new one, very nice, they're
What color is it?
It would be red and with a lot of yellow and reflective yellow.
Nice.
But the, some of the committee members took great pride in showing me some of the stuff that they specked out and how it is and how it's set up compared to other
Right.
previous ambulants to make
Make room for a future.
Better, more efficient, better care for the patient, that kind of thing. Very interesting.
They worked hard on it.
Yep, so.
That's great.
Well, it's going to be in service for what, ten years?
Man, we never be behind in back of it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right.
Absolutely. Cool.
Just for grades.
Okay.
All right.
Cool.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We're doing good on time. There's no update on that one. Do we want to approach the town treasurer, clerk, collector office service enhancement tonight?
I thought we were going to do that during the budget season.
We are. Perfect. New business, or other old business?
I'm still recovering.
I'm just making sure you're okay over there, my friend.
Both chiefs have toured the Westfield dispatch unit at the airport location and they'll be submitting a recommendation to us soon for a regional study approach.
Good.
So, we're back to looking at a regional agreement, the other one with the other towns and, you know, of course didn't materialize.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we had met with Chief Reagan at a, Fire Chief and I at a Fire Chief's breakfast or something, and we talked to her about that and they were in the middle of hiring for that dispatch supervisor position.
New person's on board and gave them, met with them and gave them the tour.
Okay, good. New business, Goose Pond Solar Payment in lieu of Taxes.
Right, you have that in your folder, that company's load star and the assessors have given us their recommendations on what we should be meeting with them and entering into a pilot negotiations and they are waiting to hear from us. So, I would like to take the assessors' recommendations and go forward with counsel and start that pilot agreement. And we can use Mr. Bishop for the assessors' consultant if we need to, but it'll be modeled along the ones that we already have.
So, do you need a vote from this board to authorize you to do so?
Make a motion for Mr. Steinhardt to move forward.
Commence the pilot process.
Process with
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With load star energy.
Load star.
Great. Other new business? Mr. Didi?
No.